On Monday, August 22nd, 2016, at 7:00. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone. Your attendance this evening reflects an interest in local education, it's greatly appreciated. Dwayne, can you lead us into the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to 112.17, roll call, Dr. Weaver.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Present.
Mr. Griffin is excused absent tonight. Mrs. Madell.
I'm here.
Ms. Madison.
Present.
Mrs. Hines.
Present.
I am here, Madam President.
I'm here as well.
All right, everyone is here except Mr. Griffin.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 113.17. We have two items, Dr. Harmala.
Yes, I'd like to start off, we'll give an update on our transportation changes for this year, and that will be followed by a proposal that John Albrecht will provide. So Jim Larson Schidler will start off.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Harmala. When I wrote the memo that's in your board pack on page three dated August 22nd, we were on pace to meet the target of routing being completed and information being sent to parents today, as it states in the memo, informing them of their students' routing information. Due to staffing issues, routing fell behind a couple days. To remedy this, I asked drivers to come in Thursday, last Thursday, to drive all routes in order to provide early input for corrections and adjustments. Drivers paired up to drive and evaluate runs, they're driving them together, one taking notes, and they also would stop and deliberate on where the best way to go would be. Input from our drivers provide us with information which allows us to correct routes and stops. We are preparing letters for K-4 tag to be sent out tomorrow, or Wednesday at the latest. All other routes are now being scheduled to be completed this Thursday, and letters will be sent to parents of transportation-eligible students by Friday of this week. Information will also be available on our website upon mailing of the letters. Adjustments to run stops and stops is a normal process throughout the early part of each school year. We're taking additional time and effort this year with the help of our drivers to try and reduce the normal start of the school year transportation issues.
Any questions from any of the board members?
Just one question, is there a way I can select the map? I just want to see how it configures, because we're concerned about what the, you know, the hours, like, being a little bit darker earlier in, like, wooded areas. I just, if you had, like, a map, do we can see, like, where the routes are?
Um, wow, how could I show you that?
Well, not today, but like, you know, later, just kind of.
Let me work on that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, item B. Mr. Ober.
Thank you, Dr. Harmala, Madam President, members of the Board of Education and our audience. I want to introduce Ms. Jenna Mullins, our Executive Director for School Improvement in K-4 Elementary Ed. Jenna will present educational services proposal to you tonight and give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. Let me start by saying our work on this proposal comes out of our efforts to evaluate district programs and initiatives. Jenna?
Good evening, everyone. I'm making no promises of my efficiency with this clipper, but the proposal I have for you today is regarding the school improvement process of Wayne Westland Community Schools. Our proposal is that we discontinue our affiliation with an outside agency, which is the North Central Accreditation. All the schools will continue to use the Advanced Ed process, which is provided by the State of Michigan, and which is a State of Michigan requirement for all schools. In addition, we would use the current internal review process that Wayne Westland administrators have created. We would just refine that process, we would make it customized to the goals and the plans and the strategic plan of the district, as well as the individual needs for each school building to drive continuous improvement at Wayne Westland. Just a brief explanation of what our current school improvement process is, there's multiple components, but they all fit under three categories, which is first, the Advanced Ed components. These are the components that we are completed yearly at each building, as well as at the district level. These components are required by the State of Michigan, and we would continue to use those and follow that process. Another blanket component that we have is an internal review process, which was created by the talent within Wayne Westland. It looks like yearly reviews, scheduled at buildings, those are scheduled in advance, often multiple years in advance, so a building would know when a team would be coming. The team takes an in-depth look at the process, the productivity, and the goals and plans of each individual building. They look for alignment at both the school and district mission and vision, as well as for building autonomy. What does that building specifically need? The third umbrella component is the external review, which is through the North Central Accreditation process. These are external reviews, they're conducted every five years, they're from people outside of our district, local districts, as well as often they have out-of-state members. The NCA process calls for us to prove ourselves against a set of blanket standards, which each district is asked to prove themselves to. So it's the same standard for each district. The feedback that we've gotten from our last external review five years ago was minimal feedback that drove school improvement. So we did get some feedback, but to the extent that it was minimal in terms of the way that it's changed our processes throughout the district. So the future plan for the school improvement process in all Wayne Westland Community Schools would be to customize our internal review process. We would couple that with the Advanced Ed components, which are required by MDE, the State of Michigan. We believe that through the redesign, we could support growth that's tailored to each individual school building, that's data-driven by the individual stakeholder academic and perception data that we receive. Previously required components of the NCA are not custom and tailored to each individual buildings. Like I mentioned, it's their blanket standards, which we're asked to prove that we are doing those things, rather than to display what we're doing and be given feedback on those. Some positives to taking this proposal into consideration would be the realigning of resources. Approximately $150,000 to $165,000 could be used and could be realigned for various things over the course of a five-year period. But even more powerful than the fiscal resources are the hours, the work hours that it would give back to our buildings, to our administrators, to our teaching staff, to all stakeholders involved. And I would say hundreds of hours back to planning for students, PLC planning, building level and district level planning for continuous and rapid turnaround. So that's a really valuable resource. You know that we always talk that time is so powerful, and this process would give back hundreds of hours to our buildings. Just a brief history of Advanced Ed, to make sure that we're on the same page with that. In 2011, Wayne Westland Community Schools became district accredited through NCA and Advanced Ed, so through that coupling. Despite moving away from the external reviews associated with NCA accreditation, Wayne Westland will still continue to use the Advanced Ed piece to drive the school improvement As far as ramifications for disassociating ourselves with an outside agency for the purpose of school improvement, we really could find none. Local universities were, local Michigan universities were contacted, as well as other Michigan public school districts that are not district accredited, MDE was contacted to gather information. Any ramifications that would cause our district if we disassociated ourselves with them, to date, we do not have any to share. So essentially, there are no sanctions for choosing not to affiliate ourselves with an outside accrediting agency. Thirty-three, there are 33 districts in Wayne County, 15 are not. I have the information for the board if they would like to see that. I also have the information for other counties close by, Oakland County, as well as Washtenaw County, if the board would like to see that. So in conclusion, the necessity of change. When we talk about NCA accreditation, we talk about a blanket set of standards. And where Wayne Westland is, we need to customize our school improvement plan in a way that looks at our buildings, the size of our buildings, the location of our buildings, the demographic of our buildings, the student achievement data, the perception data of our community, and drive our improvement through those items. There are no sanctions at the state level for not being accredited, but there are severe sanctions when we start to talk about the top-to-bottom rankings and where we fall in those. And so that brings us here tonight with the proposal to disassociate ourselves with NCA for the purpose of rapid turnaround aligned with the strategic plan, the mission and the vision of each building, and the continuous collection of data.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question. Was there a fee attached to our affiliation with Advanced Ed?
Yes, there's a, correct me if I misspeak, but there's a $15,000 fee per year, as well as when you do the external review each year, that total is about $50,000 every fifth year.
Wow.
For, that's for NCA. For Advanced Ed, there is none. That's a requirement of the state.
Right. Okay. So we're still doing all the work, but we're just not paying somebody, bottom line. Accreditation used to be a big thing for the universities. I'm not sure it still is. I think they're looking more at test scores for admission, am I correct?
I spoke on the phone to three different universities where I know that we send multiple students each year, and they were unable to give me any information regarding NCA in their process. Most said that it's essentially a hodgepodge, they look at test scores, they look at extracurriculars, things of that nature. None were able to give me any information that NCA's requirement or speak to that being something that they look at for college entrance.
Okay, thanks.
Todd?
Yeah, well, 10 or 12 years ago, NCA was kind of dragged into the school improvement model. I'm not sure that they wanted to do that, I don't know that they did it well. Let's assume we go away from Advanced Ed, and we start developing goals for each school. I'm assuming there's some latitude for a building, and yet there must be some sort of umbrella structure from the district for that building?
And yes, one clarification would be there's still multiple components that we do that drive the school improvement on Advanced Ed that we would be required by MDE to do. There's a data analysis, there's evaluations of programs, there's goals and plans that we would still be required to do. That's of no fee. Every Michigan public school is required to do those things. So we would use those as a component, those components as a piece to drive what we do. Then our plan would be to take the current internal review process and customize that and focus that, so at both the district level and at the building level. So essentially, it would look in a model with Advanced Ed, a district school improvement plan, and then each building would have autonomy in their own plan, but aligned to the district plan as well.
And would I be right to assume that we would see some elements of our strategic plan in that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Dr. Weaver?
Two things. First of all, you plan on starting this school year?
We would plan to, we would, the plan would be for this school year to continue the internal review process that is in place and have that refined as the school year progresses.
Okay.
But yes, to start this year.
I don't know if you have a model for this yet, but you mentioned hundreds of hours rededicated to the buildings. I think at the end of the year, I would like to see how those hundreds of hours, you know, were spent, you know what I mean, in terms of what, how did we do it better in our districts? Because we didn't have to put all these hours into this. So I don't know if you have any kind of model, or if there is any sort of model, but I'd like to, I'd like to see that if it's possible. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mullins.
Okay, moving on to item number 114.17, citizen comments, Dr. Weaver?
This is a place on our agenda where you may come and speak to tonight's agenda. Would anyone like to speak?
Okay.
Seeing none, Madam President.
Thank you. Item number 115.17, citizen agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved?
Moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Ms. Hines. Any dissension or any, what, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madison.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mrs. Madell.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that we have a 6-0 vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 116.17, designation of delegates for the 2016 MASB Delegate Assembly. I guess my first question is who all plans to attend? So with that being said, I know that Mr. Griffin isn't, so we all have opportunity to be delegates, and one will be alternate, so.
I've done that, it's, I'll do it again.
Do alternate, or the alternate, okay, all right. So for the record.
How many delegates do we get? The same five?
Same.
We have five delegates before.
Five delegates, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll have Ms. Hines, Dr. Weaver, myself, and Mrs. Madell as the main delegates, and then Mr. Buckaloo will serve as alternate. Okay? Okay. All right, moving on to item number 117.17. Dr. Harmala?
Yes, thank you. This is our introduction of the Staff Recognition and Appreciation Days. We've provided a calendar again this year of the dates that we would like to honor and thank our staff, and they are aligned with, if there is a national holiday or a recognition for these particular groups, we've aligned them with those dates. So we'd like to offer those dates as recognition dates.
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved?
Support.
Moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Madell.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect a 6-0 vote.
Thank you. Our motion passes. Item number 118.17, Head Start Multi Report, Mrs. Madell.
You all received the monthly financial report in your packet as required by federal law. It's actually a cost control statement that was in your packet. A lot of changes going on in Head Start this year, and it's going to be a little bumpy road for a while, but eventually everything will work out. So again, open enrollments going on right now, so if you think you qualify, come on down.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Madell. Moving on to item number 119.17, Policy Procedures and Strategic Planning Committee Report, Ms. Hines?
Yes, present was Dr. Michelle Harmala, Superintendent, Melody Hines Trustee, Sally Madison Trustee, Carol Madell Trustee, and Community Member Ron Madison. The meeting started at 6:30 PM. The committee reviews the proposal by Lus Albertson to develop a draft Board Operating Procedures, the BOP. The committee discussed the need for all trustees to review and make suggestions related to the revisions of the BOP, the benefit of having legal counsel to review and support the development of the BOP, the benefit of the alignment between the recently adapted board policies and the BOP revisions from Lus Albertson, and the need to ensure fiscal efficiency in the work that must be completed. The meeting was adjourned at approximately 6:55 PM.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hines. Moving on to item.
Not quite done yet.
Okay.
And then we have one more agenda item.
Oh, okay.
119.7, resolved that the board to enter the agreement with Lus Albertson to revise the Board Operating Procedures, BOP, per proposal provided by Lus Albertson, in the amount of $2,500 for 10 hours of related work.
Thank you. All right, so we need to take a, at this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved?
Moved by Mrs. Madison.
Second.
Supported, I heard Ms. Hines first. Supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mrs. Madell.
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect a 6-0 vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 120.17, Superintendent Report, Dr. Harmala?
Yes, thank you, President Walker, good evening. We're fast approaching the start of another school year, and we're making our final preparations to ensure we're ready for teaching and learning, and you had heard a little bit of an update on that. We also have changed our process for flyers that we provide to families from outside organizations. Historically, outside organizations have asked us to share with our students their flyers by passing out paper flyers. We've had requests for over 100 flyers annually, nearly one every other day. As you might guess, this has a significant impact on our schools, specifically our principals and our support staff in organizing the distribution, and our teachers in handing out related flyers or stuffing students' backpacks or folders. We've found an online resource for this type of solicitation, and we have been and will continue to refer anybody who wants to share flyers with this particular resource. We'll be asking our school personnel to share the online website for the external flyer warehouse with families, so they can do their own searches for items or services of interest. The website is called MyCommonWealth.com. It was actually shared at one of our stakeholder meetings at the Family Resource Center, and the "My" is spelled M-I, so M.I Commonwealth dot com, all one word. And that will host flyers from many, many organizations, not just those who try and distribute them through the schools, but it'll be a warehouse of information for people in the community. And I believe the folks sending their flyer in, there's no particular charge for getting that information posted to the community, so that's one big change. Our online registration is underway and has been ongoing since August 3rd. This is our second year implementing the online registration. We ran into a significant issue where the post office failed to deliver more than 1,000 letters, and they were first-class stamped letters, they weren't bulk mail, and that, those letters contain the necessary information that our families needed for registration. Our staff worked with the post office who did then remail the letters. We didn't quite understand why they didn't get mailed the first time, but they did remail them. We also sent email notices to inform families about the online process, and we've assisted many who've responded with questions. I do have to commend our sports staff, both in my office and down in Education Services, who've done a remarkable job handling many, many phone calls. So thank you, John, to your staff, and thank you, Sue and Cheryl, for always responding so helpfully. We're continuing to finalize our staff placements for the school year. We did have fewer teacher replacements this year than we've had in the past, 39 year-to-date versus 75 last school year at this time. We're also working on administrative replacements due to changes that have included resignations, retirements, and promotions, as well as some administrators who've chosen to go to other districts. We're sharing the changes with each of our schools and their surrounding communities to ensure our parents are aware of the changes that are affecting their child's school. And last of all, I'd like to provide an update as to the Wayne County Regional Enhancement Millage that will be on the November 2000 ballot for Wayne County voters. Michigan's constitution gives the state control over funding for public schools with the exception of one thing, and that's for an enhancement millage that can be voted on at the county level. Funds for an enhancement millage may be used for day-to-day operations of a school. The enhancement millage that will be on the November ballot is called the Wayne County Education Enhancement Millage. If approved by the voters across the county, it would generate revenue that will be provided to public school districts in the county on an equal-per-pupil basis. Current per-pupil funding by the state is not equal per student. In fact, Wayne Westland receives the base or the least amount provided by the state. This particular enhancement millage would request two mills to be levied for six years beginning this school year. This would equate to approximately $385 per pupil, or about $4.4 million based on last year's pupil count for Wayne Westland. Homeowners may want to know that the millage would cost approximately $8 per month for a home valued at $100,000. And funds for the millage would assist Wayne Westland in implementing its strategic goals, specifically enhancement of our educational programs and services, attraction and retention of personnel, and the ability to replace our aging bus fleet. So thank you very much, President Walker.
Thank you, Dr. Harmala. Moving on to item number 121.17, citizen comments, non-agenda items, Dr. Weaver?
Yes, this is a place on our agenda where anyone in the audience may come and speak to any school-related item. Seeing none, Madam President.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 122.17, Review and Recommendations, Board of Education. Ms. Hines?
I'd like to thank Mr. Larson for thinking outside of the box for transportation, I'm excited about that. And I also like to thank you guys, too, with the registration. You know, we're doing everything every year to improve it, so it's awesome, because, you know, as a parent, I hate filling out all those slips, like, every year with the different information, so it's nice to have it available online. And I also like to thank you for your presentation about how to save us money, how to kind of be our own persons and build, like, our own strategic plan, so we can be an example for other districts. So you guys are doing a fabulous job.
Thank you, Mrs. Madison.
Welcome to the 2016-17 school year, and I just want to remind everyone who might be watching at home that we will have students quickly coming to school, so please be mindful to watch out for pedestrians as the little pitter-patter feeder going off to school in a rush, and people waiting at the bus stops, and especially on the way home, too. It's, I know with the weather changing and the daylight hours changing, we can forget those simple things, and let's have a safe, happy school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Madison. Mr. Buckaloo?
Thank you. Well, summer is ending, and that means the start of a new school year, and for our 10-month employees and for our students, that's kind of sad. But for many of us, and probably within a couple of weeks of the start of school, for all of us, there's going to be a new enthusiasm, and I'd like to share that enthusiasm. And especially, I'm looking forward to seeing some of the fruits of our district's strategic plan. In addition, on Friday, Mr. Larson Schidler and I had the pleasure of traveling to Lansing to attend the Small and Rural School Conference put on by MASB, and among the topics that they discussed was the School Funding Adequacy Study. And this is a study that was put forward by the legislature, called for at the time that Proposal 1 was working its way through the legislature. The conservatives in the legislature put some restrictions on that study to make sure that it wasn't some wild-eyed kind of report, and I think that they did that, but even in doing that, they couldn't hide the fact that public education in the State of Michigan is dramatically underfunded, to the tune of about $1,000 a student, it's underfunded. And that's for the general ed kit. If we're talking about an English as a second language student, we need probably an additional 40% on top of the recommended $8,667. And if we're talking about an at-risk student, we probably need an additional 30% on top of that $8,660. So the money that would require, that would be needed for us to be as proficient as some of the schools around the state that are touted as the best schools just simply isn't there. I know we're being told that you need to be better in order to deserve this funding, but the truth of the matter is, until we get this funding, we're never going to have the wherewithal to become proficient. We've always been measured against Massachusetts, and rightly so, they're the gold standard. 20 years ago, we were on a par with Massachusetts, and when we were, we were probably one of the top six spending states nationally. We spent money on education at that time, and the result was that we did well. Since that time, we've dropped from sixth in spending down to 25th, and our proficiency rating has fallen right along with it. There's no guarantee that if we got additional funding, we would be as proficient as Massachusetts. On the other hand, without that funding, we'll never have the opportunity to find out if we could be that. By the way, I think that we could. So funding remains an issue, and it remains an issue at the state level. How much we receive, what is adequate, and how funding is determined are things that you and I and the legislature in Lansing all need to become more aware of and start a discussion that could lead into some changes that might give us the proficiency that everyone says we ought to be producing. On a different note. On a different note, in my reading last week, the old thing, Michigan is a peninsula, beautiful place, surrounded by four of the Great Lakes. They suggested in, in this article that I was reading that there's no place in Michigan that you could stand and be further than 85 miles away from one of the four Great Lakes that touch Michigan. And I got to thinking, what if you live in Wayne Westland? How far away would you be from a great school? At most, five or six miles. Most of us are within walking distance of one of those schools. Those schools offer fantastic teachers, fantastic support people. I couldn't be prouder to be associated with Wayne Westland than I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I echo Mr. Buckaloo's sentiments. I just have something tonight that came up during one of those darn pesky MASB classes we've been going to. Let me just say this, that what I'm saying tonight has no reflection at all on our finance department, so please don't take any offense. I just have a question. I'm noticing things like Plant Moran, "We do not express an opinion or provide any assurance on the information because the limited procedures do not provide us with sufficient evidence to express an opinion or provide any assurance." And then in another place, "We believe our audit provides a reasonable basis for our opinion on compliance for each major federal program. However, our audit does not provide a legal determination." Okay. So the third thing that I read was, "Our audit of the financial statements does not relieve you," being board members individually and as a board, "does not relieve us or management of your responsibilities." So I guess what I'm saying is, and maybe to my fellow board members as well, I don't suspect anything. I believe in, in my going on to 13 years on this board, we have always excelled, especially in that department. But I guess what I would like to know is, if I can just put it bluntly, individually and corporately, what is this board on the hook for should anything happen? And, and so that's one question. And the other thought I had is that these are so wide that you can drive a truck through them at any time, because Plant Moran is just handing the football over here and saying, "We're not responsible in any way." Would it be prudent, because a forensic audit would take two years or more for, I'm not talking about that kind of thing, but would it be prudent for us as board members to consider spot checking down the road every two or three years, or five years, whatever the case may be, to look at a specific area and ask Plant Moran to forensic audit that part or that portion of the budget? Again, this is no reflection. It's just some reading I've been doing, and I'm not sure how my fellow board members would even feel about that. But, you know, this is, this is what I've come up with. I would actually like to know what the, what does not relieve board members or management of your responsibilities actually means. So I just throw that out to board members, and again, it has no, no reflection on our finance department, and none is intended. So I just wanted to ask those questions tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Moving on to Mrs. Madell.
Well, I want to congratulate all of the people who were recalled from layoff. I always like this month more than I like June, because June's when we reflect our, our layoff procedure, and August is always when we bring them back, and it's always a good time of the year. So hopefully, they will have a successful school year, and their anxiety will be over with as to whether they will have a job in the fall. I got a chance to go to Leadership Council, is that what it's called?
Yep.
Which actually is taking place of administrative retreat, and got a chance to, to show that I am, as a board trustee, part of the team, as the rest of us are, and was able to add my two cents in when needed, give a little, just, a little bit of a different perspective on looking at issues from our side of the coin, as opposed to classroom building, and brought that perspective to the table also. I'd also like to congratulate all of our kids who survived band camp. Both of our high schools have been practicing and working on their new routine for this school year. So congratulations to all of our band students who made it through.
All right. Thank you. Usually by the time it gets to me, everything's been said, so I'm just going to say welcome to a new year, and as always, thank you for taking time out your evening to come and spend some time with us as we conduct the business of the district, and we hope to see you next month. At this time, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Ms. Hines. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone not in favor? Motion moves, uh, motion carries. See you all next time.